Good evening, everyone. We are still wait-- oh, there she is.
Sorry.
Hooray. I'm gonna wait to officially open this until you're seated, Madam Councilwoman. Okay, I'm gonna open this meeting in the City Council. Madam City Clerk, could you please call the room?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Gene Goss.
Present.
Mayor Protam Edward Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Rachel Erzmann-Di.
Present.
Councilmember Kelly Krebs.
Here now.[354.73][354.73](Laughter).
And Councilmember Robert Parkhurst.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Councilmember Parkhurst will lead us in the pledge of allegiance and inspiration.
You all could please stand. And ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So before I start with my reflection, I'd like to take a moment to have a moment of silence for the 14 students, or 13 students and one teacher.
Eighteen.
Is it eighteen now? For the students and teacher that were, I guess assassinated is only the right word. It's a tragedy, the gun deaths we're having in this country, so if we could just take a second and have a moment of silence. Thank you all. So I'm sure everybody knows this coming weekend's the unofficial start to summer. And I actually got a head start on it. I spent three days in the wilderness last weekend up at San Gregorio. It was a great chance to reflect on things and reflect on what's going on both personally and in our society as a whole. And two of the things that stick with me when I'm out there, one of them is a quote from John Muir. And he says, "I go into the forest, and into the forest I go to lose my mind and find my soul." And then the other quote that resonates with me is from the Shakespeare play As You Like It, where Duke Senior says that he goes into the woods to find tongues in trees, books in the running brooks, sermons in stones, and good in everything. We are really blessed here that in a matter of minutes, we can be in the Angeles National Forest, and within less than forty minutes, we can be at 5,000 feet and climbing to over 11,500 feet. As, you know, school wraps up, temperatures warm, and summer starts, I encourage everybody to take us some time to get outside and enjoy the wonderful outdoors that we have right at our disposal. Mr. Mayor, back to you.
Thank you, Councilman Parkhurst. Okay, if we'll turn to tonight's agenda, if I could get a motion for approval of the agenda or amendments.
So moved for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Let's go to the approval for reading resolutions and ordinances. I'd like to get a motion to that effect, please.
Move to approve all readings of ordinances and resolutions by title only and waive the reading in full.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries unanimously. And let's take a look at the meeting minutes in front of us, and if there are any ideas for changing, please make a motion of that effect.
Mr. Mayor, I had one small edit. Towards the end of the minutes, I think it was on page six, it, I think I was quoted as someone from Little Caesar was Parkhurst Parkhurst.
Okay.[608.73][608.73](Laughter).
So we don't need to have two Parkhursts there, so we'll just delete one of those. Other than that, I found them fine.
Madam City Clerk, did you get that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we received that email. Thank you.
Any other changes? Is there a motion for approval?
I move to approve the minutes as amended.
Is there a second?
A second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, got that out of the way. Let's talk about what we've been up to. Mayor and City Council reports, who'd like to go first?
I can jump in, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Firstly, I just wanted to recognize May, at the very end of the month, is Asian Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and all the contributions Asian Pacific Islanders have made to the history of the United States. And usually I try to do something in the beginning of the month, but I didn't this time, so I'll recognize it now. Secondly, I wanted to share that during the last community services meeting, unfortunately I was unable to attend, but I did meet with Sherewinsky immediately thereafter the meeting. And anybody that has been concerned about the permit and the process we're interested in putting in place, they are gonna revisit that. There is going to be a special meeting just to provide an overview as to what that existing process is and any potential changes to that, to ensure that we are recognizing that there are concerns with residents, and also we want to make sure that a protocol is being followed across the board. So we expect to see that back to the Community Services Commission, and then at some point be a recommendation to City Council. And the last thing I wanted to report on is the League of California Cities provided, or had a leader summit a few weeks ago. And for those of you that aren't aware of what California Cities does, it is an association of sorts of all the local governments and elected officials throughout the state. And what we did at this last summit is advocate on certain issues that are important to us as local electeds and to local governments. And just to give a highlight as to what the five areas we are focusing on, one, the first one was the, was on unfunded, well, actually, is on housing. Secondly, it's on infrastructure. Thirdly, homelessness and climate resiliency. But the one I wanted to share today was more around the state budget. The state at this time has a $68 billion, that's B with a B, billion surplus. And we're asking to allocate $1.6 billion for programs that the city and the state have shared objectives for. And there are a lot of what we call unfunded state mandates, where the state requires us to do something, but they don't fund it. And so we, as a city, are expected to find the funding for that. So we're asking to fill that so that we can ensure that what you're requiring us from the state, that we have the funding to do it. An example of that will be something like SB 1383, where there is a compost requirement and how we're supposed to divvy up our compost, our trash, and I know we'll be discussing that here, but there is a cost that's involved to that. So as the state is issuing these mandates, how can they better fund us to ensure that we are meeting those requirements? And just for housing and economic development programs, again, that are requirements from the state, and we're just asking the state, with this surplus that you have and the requirements that you are having us adhere to and comply with, also give us the funding. So I'll continue to update our residents on that and also our council as things unfold.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, no report this time, kind of a makeup for my long-winded report last council meeting.
Thank you.
I have a prospective report. I just wanted to give a shout out to a couple of things happening this week, along with what Councilmember Parker said about the unofficial opening summer. I actually thought he was gonna say because the Mount Wilson Trail Race is on Saturday, which to me is the unofficial opening of summer. So I wanted to mention that, and I'm somewhat surprised that Mayor Protam didn't mention, but tomorrow night, Wednesday, is the Little League Championships for two of our, two of the divisions, so.
There may be a little Garcia playing.[898.63][898.63](Laughter).
So if anyone's interested in a hamburger and a baseball game tomorrow night would be a good night to be at the field.
Thank you.
So a couple of things have gone on with the Clean Power Alliance. They had elections for a new board chair. So our board chair was from South Pasadena. For the next two years, the board chair will be from Beverly Hills, minor thing. The, I was appointed as energy chair for another two years, so that's an honor. And then we also had of more substance, a lobby day. And we talked to two interesting government officials. One was a representative for the California Independent System Operator. Basically, it's the traffic cop, if you will, for all of the energy within the state of California. And the good news is they're working on a transmission and reliability plan for the next 20 years, so that's really good. The bad news is that this summer, we may be a little bit short. It's looking like that in September, there could be shortages. They're working on a plan on it. The shortage is somewhere around like 250,000 homes worth on peak days. So in that September time period, we all may be called upon, just as we are from a water perspective, from an energy perspective, to turn up our thermostats and curtail during that peak period of 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And then the final thing was that Senator Laird, we spoke with, he is the head of a climate task force in the state, and he is championing a bill called SB 1020, and that's gonna put some interim targets on renewable energy between now and 2014. One other update, I was fortunate enough to hang out with the fire department on a couple of different occasions. One, I went down to our Rio, to the Rio Hondo Training Center to see where our officers or our firemen train and see they've got structure fires, they've got buildings to deal with in earthquakes, all kinds of different scenarios, working on different roofing material. So that was really enlightening. And then today, I stopped by briefly. We had, the fire department was doing some training with the U.S. Forest Service, so the wildland firefighters, and they were doing some joint training up in the Bailey Canyon area. And, you know, this really underscores the amount of training that both our fire and police departments go through. Actually, we see some of the police department training that's on our consent agenda tonight. And, you know, we've really got a professional crew out there that are there to protect us, and they're always looking to trying to get more training to keep us safe. So it was a real honor to see that, and I applaud both chiefs for their attention to training for, to keep our community safe.
Thank you, Councilman Parkhurst. I've always, as usual, I've been asked to do some announcements for the city, and the first one, I think everyone in here is aware of, that longtime citizen activist and friend to many of us, most of us, Joan Crowe passed away this week. She was active in everything from girls softball, the creative arts group, Sierra Madre Library, the garden club, Sierra Madre Historical Society. She's preceded in her death by her husband, former Sierra Madre Mayor Bruce Crowe. And I can say this personally, and I think I speak for everyone up here, that she's just dearly, will be dearly missed. There's just no doubt about it. And to echo what my council colleague, Creep, said, we do have the Mount Wilson Trail Race coming up on Saturday. The pre-race pasta fee dinner is Friday night, as I'm sure you're all aware, in the Cursing Court. The race begins at 7:00 a.m. Saturday morning, and obviously, we're gonna have booths and food and beer gardens, so I hope you, we can get out the usual turnout that we've come to expect for the Mount Wilson Trail Race. Also was asked to announce that our Memorial Day Ceremony, which is hosted by the VFW Post 328, will be held at Pioneer Cemetery on Monday, the 30th, at 11:00 a.m. That's 11:00 a.m. And one final thing, the street project, there's a big street project underway now up on East Grandview and North Mountain Trail. They're doing work on sidewalk repairs, curbs, and gutters, curb ramps, and street resurfacing. So if you're wondering what's going on, that's a big deal, so keep an eye out for it. And also, we have, still have some commission openings. We have, I think we're gonna deal with the planning commission opening, at least for now, tonight, but there is a planning commission vacancy. Community Services has two vacancies. The library board has two anticipated vacancies. And the Natural Resources Commission has one current vacancy and one anticipated vacancy for a total of two. So spread the word, we're looking for, obviously, motivated and interested people to be part of the, part of the solution here in Sierra Madre. One final note, I missed the library board trustees meeting yesterday, and I regret that. I'm gonna confer with staff and confer with the librarian about what I missed, and I'll bring that information back to you. But I was at the Cal State LA graduation yesterday. Somebody that's kind of important to me, let's say, I've been married to her 37 years, Lisa Goss got her master's degree yesterday, so.
Oh, congrats.
Very proud of her.[1259.23][1259.23](Applause). So anyway, that's where I was yesterday, and we had a big celebration last night. I'm still shaking the effects off, so I'll do the best I can tonight. Okay, so that brings us to presentations, and we have a really big one, and we're all looking forward to tonight, by the Sierra Madre Civic Club for the grant fund distribution that they do every year. And I'm not sure who's gonna be taking the lead here, but there she is. Thank you, Margaret.
Hello, Mayor Goss and City Council members. Sierra Madre, my name is Margaret Switzer, and for one more week, I am president of Sierra Madre Civic Club. We're so happy to be back here to make these presentations of our philanthropy checks. The last two years, we did give out checks, but we weren't here to be with you to do it, and so we're very excited to be here. It was a busy day for us. Joan Crowe's funeral was today, and our sisterhood of members were there in force, providing the food and camaraderie around that event. So today has been a very busy and important day for us, but we're so pleased to be here because we get to present checks to 16 organizations that provide services to Sierra Madre. Each one of these projects was sponsored by a club member, submitted for approval, and club as a whole vetted them with two separate votes. And so we have checks totaling $17,500 to present tonight. Now, this is in addition to the $5,000 we were able to present to five, $1,000 each to five graduating high school seniors here in town for our annual educational awards. It's been a hard couple of years. We've had to look for different ways to create the money that we can give away. But with the support of the community and the hard work of our members, we've been able to do it, and we're very pleased to be here tonight. Now, I'd like to call our philanthropy chairman to assist with the distribution of the checks. James Mansfield.
I did this a few years ago, and I could look over the podium better then. I shrunk three inches.[1435.73][1435.73](Laughter). The first check is to the Conkalescent Aid Society. It's to be used to repair damaged durable medical equipment that's loaned out free of charge to members of the community. And there are over 350 families in Sierra Madre that receive, that have equipment. The next check is to the Creative Arts Group to provide teachers and materials for the Sierra Madre first grader students' crocagators art project. We have a check to the Fletcher Fund to allow for trail maintenance to the Mount Wilson Trail and the Bailey Canyon Trail. We have a check to the Helping Hands Community Food Bank to purchase items not available for free from the L.A. Food Bank and local farmers. We have a check for the Post Office Landscape Project Group.
Mr. Spears.
We have a check for reading is fundamental. This is to purchase books. Three books are given to all second grade students in the Pasadena Unified School District. Sierra Madre Cert is upgrading, is going to be upgrading their Cert Communications van to enable it to pull their new trailer, so we have a check for the Sierra Madre Cert. Sierra Madre Community Foundation is gonna provide swag for the kids participating in the Fourth of July fun run. The Sierra Madre Community Nursery School is going to be able to install security cameras on their campus. The check for the Sierra Madre Elementary School PTA will aid them in maintaining the traditionally significant koi pond. The Sierra Madre Pioneer Cemetery will use the money to replace four benches that have deteriorated over time. The Sierra Madre Playhouse, this is gonna be added to their fund for building an ADA compliant restroom. Unfortunately, we were able to, unable to give them the whole $50,000 they need, but this will be a deposit. The Sierra Madre Public Library is receiving a check that will be used to provide community ride outreach projects. The Sierra Madre Rose Float Association is, the check will help them to make facility upgrades to the rose float barn. The Sierra Madre Search and Rescue is going to use the money to buy a two-piece titanium litter to transport injured people from the field. And for those of you who don't know it, Civic Club maintains the rotunda at City Hall. And so we have some money that we're gonna be putting into our reserve fund that will be used to trim the wisteria vine when it needs it every two to three years. We have to collect money over the period of two to three years to be able to afford that. Thank you very much. And we'd like to invite the recipients to meet us outside in the rotunda for a picture for our president's book.
Would you like to have, do it right up front, here?
Why not? Of course.
Sure. And I'd just like to thank the Civic Club for all the things you're doing and have done historically. You're absolutely a vital organization in this city. And everybody, give them a hand, please. Okay, so that moves us-- Okay, so that moves us right along to a presentation from the Sierra Madre Rose Float Association.
Hello, Glenn Robertson, I'm a board member at the Rose Float Association, he just asked me what my job was, I don't know what it is right now, it's whatever Barbie tells me. It is an honor to be able to present this year's, 2022's photo to you of the classroom.
Beautiful, beautiful.
These are, they're added to all entrance from the Trinity Roses, and I believe it hangs generally in the hall here, so, it is with gratitude and appreciation that we represent the city of Sierra Madre. We are, this wonderful ward, I won the judges award in 2022 for Best Floral and Overall Design, so, we are already at work for next year's, so we invite everyone to come down and be a part of it. We managed last year in all of the crazy protocols to get this float built and decorated, so this year's going to be easy for this year's, the theme of the parade which will happen on January 2nd is turning a corner, so we are all ready to turn that corner. So, we look forward to seeing you all at the rose barn, and we appreciate the support.
Thank you, Mrs. Robertson. I know I speak for everybody up here, when I say that that float every year represents the pride of this city, so, job well done, and just thank you so much to everyone involved. Okay, so let's move on to our first agenda item, which is our consent agenda. Oh, do you have, public comment? Public comment on non-agenda items, if you've submitted a yellow card, you'll be called, we would appreciate if you would do that, you'll be limited to three minutes when you come up to the podium.
Mr. Mayor, the first speaker card is received from Randy Skillman.
Hello, my name is Randy Skillman, I live at 643 Camillo, and I appreciate your time and be able to address this situation. Some of you have maybe been on Camillo, it's a relatively steep street, and I know Chris is here, and the problem is, is the leaks and the patches. And this morning I walked out, and from, this is a 600 block of Camillo, and I don't know if any of you have ever been up there or not, it is steep, but there were 26 potholes that had been repaired, either recently or over the last couple of years, within a five-house lock distance, that's all. And the problem that it is, is the way they patch it, because the street is on an incline, you have trash trucks, you've got FedEx trucks, you've got the street sweeper, when they're going down the street, they're putting on the brakes, they're hitting these potholes, and all it's doing is making a pothole bigger. And Chris has been out there fixing them, when they fix them, they cold patch them, they don't do it hot patch, and as a result, it doesn't last. And in front of my house, the driveway, it's probably been patched a dozen times, right, Chris?
Could be.
And you guys would have the records of it, but it just doesn't seem to me that you guys have spent all this time fixing this thing, and then Chris tells us that we're not going to be able to get to the street and fix the pipes for two years? We need to go to the city or go to the state and mandate some money to be able to fix this, and I encourage all of you, if you have the time and the interest, to go up on that street and understand and appreciate what we're asking for. There are members here, in the, in the street, that live on the street, that are same problem. I mean, it's dangerous, and eventually you're going to have a sinkhole. All this water's got to go somewhere, but that is patched probably two times a month. So, all I'm asking is the city to consider stepping it up and getting this done fixed quicker than in the next two years. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Skillman.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker card, and I apologize if I mispronounced his name, Rubina Gudikia.
Mayor, City Council members, I've been living on the 600 block of Camillo for 26 years, my first time here at a meeting, I think it's important. As you heard, we've had leaks for years and years, the last two years have been dangerous. Otherwise, we don't care, Public Works does a great job coming out, but the repairs only last a day or two, immediately there's a sinkhole, and, you know, it just drops, sometimes, actually last week, we had three leaks in a matter of two weeks, and we just realized the same area just had a fourth leak this morning, so I'm sure Mr. Sumino will get another email from our neighbors about that, so, the cost for you to come out constantly, the repairs are done quickly, cheap gaskets, again, cold patch, so immediately it dips and actually causes mini ramps. We're on a steep incline, the cars are coming down, they go off this incline, I witnessed a car losing control and almost ending up on the front yard of the home on the corner of Lotus and Camillo. Something is going to happen, that's why we're here, it's dangerous, and when people aren't losing control, there's gravel being sprayed everywhere, very expensive cars coming down these streets, and it's just getting scratched up left and right. I think I emailed you all the situation and how dire it is on our street. So, we need short-term solutions while we're waiting for the large solutions, I know you have potholes everywhere in the, in the city. Our area is about 50 years old, and it's literally collapsing on our block, on the 600 block. So, short-term solutions, if we could use more expensive gaskets, maybe we could just fix the 600 block now, because that seems to be the problem over and over and over. And maybe we could hot patch every time instead of cold patch and come back the next day with another leak. So, anyway, whatever you could do, get some funds from the state, hopefully, since infrastructure repair is a hot topic in the state, whatever we can do, I know money's hard, but we did just buy a building on the street for three and a half million dollars on Grandview from the general fund, so I know there's funds out there for the infrastructure, we just hope that Camillo's on top of your list and top of your priority. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker card is received from Susan Neuhausen.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members, I'm Susan Neuhausen, 491 Grove Street. I want to share what Mr. Parkers, you know, I'm, I'm actually also heartbroken by the senseless gun violence that's been killing innocent children and adults, and I actually feel powerless to do anything about it, and so, instead, I'm channeling my energy to try to make an impact in Sierra Madre. You know, similar to you all, but albeit in a much, 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 much smaller way, and so that's why I keep coming up here every time. And so I just want to make two quick comments, one about water and one about fire. So, last time, you, City Councilman, I commented on the amount of water that would be required for the Meadows project, and that was underestimated by at least 50%. But two questions that I've been thinking about that I haven't seen addressed are the impact on the Sierra Madre water system infrastructure. So, water's going to be pumped to the meadows, and so, how will the pumping of the additional water affect the service life of the pumps, who pays for that? And second, in order to get the water up to the meadows, is there an increase in water pressure? And if so, it would seem that pressure on the pipe system may cause leaks in already antiquated pipes, as you've just heard. And so, I actually would like, if the request, if the information be provided to the public to allay concerns. I know it's been addressed maybe, but I haven't heard it. You know, we're already losing an unsustainable percentage of available water to leaky pipes, and do we really want to put more pressure on the system? And then the other thing I just want to comment on briefly is the fire danger, it's real. You know, the tract housing development, the meadows, it's being built in an area of very high severity fire danger. Current fire standards for homes, it means they're still going to burn, it just takes longer, and the codes, you know, as soon as they're put in place, they become outdated and insufficient. The Paradise and the Bobcat Fires, and the recent coastal fire in Laguna Nigal really highlight how rapidly small fires can become explosive, you know, due to years of severe drought, in areas that haven't burned in decades. The coastal fire started out as a small brush fire that quickly turned into an inferno of 20 houses. The fire captain in charge of that blaze noted that the houses that burned had proper brush clearance. I looked up photos of one of the houses online as it was for sale, and saw it was stucco, it was equipped with internal sprinklers, it had a tile roof. And so, again, having fire protection doesn't prevent a house from burning to the ground, it just takes longer to catch fire and puts out more embers. So, to me, that fire illustrates what could easily happen in the meadows with Santa Ana winds and fire coming down the canyon just north of the property. A fire at the meadows could potentially be worse than this coastal fire because the houses are packed so close together, just 10 feet apart, and that doesn't even include the potential up to 42 ADUs. So, given the proximity of the houses, the potential lack of brush clearance, and the frequency of strong Santa Ana winds in that area, I feel like the housing project is a disaster just waiting to happen. Thank you for listening to my concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Neuhausen.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker card is received from Deb Sheridan.
Good evening, Council members, Deb Sheridan, Valley Vista Drive, I would like to second what Susan said as far as channeling my energy, because I too feel so helpless with all this carnage throughout the United States, no other nation has this. I, but, back to the business at hand, I attended the Community Services Meeting last Monday, they were discussing the changes to the filming requirements throughout Sierra Madre, but specifically because of the problems the neighbors around Alverno have had. There were several disturbing issues. One, attending were only three commissioners. The first resident to speak said several neighbors were unable to attend because of the early hour of 5:00 PM, which you changed last month from 6:30 PM. There was no public input at the Community Services Commission about the earlier time, and I for one would have spoken had I actually realized that that was going to be changed, or they were contemplating it. Two, a major change was no longer needing signatures from 51% of the neighbors to allow the filming to take place. These neighbors discovered that 100% of the signatures on the latest permission form were forged. City lawyer Garagosian's reason for their change was that, quote, "Other cities don't need this," end quote. This is not true. One neighbor researched this, Monrovia, Arcadia, and Pasadena all require signatures, which they should, as filming has a major impact on neighborhoods. Why would the city and its attorney promote a procedure that doesn't give residents a voice? Three, another major issue was that this was the first item on the agenda to be discussed. The three commissioners voted to bring this item back to their meeting next month, particularly because two commissioners were absent. This item was closed, and the commission moved on to the next item on the agenda. The six residents in attendance, including me, left, only to learn later that City Attorney Garagosian informed the commission that there would be a special meeting to discuss the legal implication. Is this not a violation of the Brown Act? At the very least, it seems a deliberate ploy to hide what is happening, contrary to the much touted transparency by City Hall, and there is more, but I'm limited to three minutes, and I thank you very much for this thankless job.
Thank you, Ms. Sheridan.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker card is from Glenn Lambden.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council, and Staff, I'm Glenn Lambden, Sturt event. I wanted to announce and bring an awareness to a new Veterans and First Responder Outreach Program that we're starting across the street at the G3 Academy. We are bringing lessons and training in Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu, based on a program that's been implemented in Texas by an organization called Veterans Jiu-Jitsu. It was designed to bring veterans that are struggling together, mostly the young ones, it's helping for healing their anxiety, PTSD, depression. I started a similar program in Pasadena, we recently were on KCAL News, CBS2, and we're having tremendous success. So, G3 Academy across the street has agreed to participate in the program, so I just wanted to let you guys know, if any of you are veterans or first responders, our Police Department, other departments, our Fire Department, even past volunteers, Sierra Madre Fire Department are welcome to come join us. It'll be Sundays at 12 noon, I have a flyer that hopefully you guys can all get, and, you know, come on, Sierra Madre, let's, let's make this happen. I've seen, I've seen the success, and it's, it's really doing well. I have a minute forty left, so in closing, may I, Mayor Pro Tem, I wanted to give you a personal thank you for your generous offer to volunteer with the Veterans Resource Group and Pasadena City College, and since I haven't been up here in a couple of years, I'd say it just suggests that you guys are doing a great job, and our Police Department, Fire, and I just want to thank everybody.
Thank you, Mayor Lambden, appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker card is received from Pat Alcorn. I apologize, Mr. Mayor, Sharon Pesner, please.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council staff, I'm Sharon Pesner, and my crew here, Carol and Sue Spears, we're here to represent the Sierra Madre Community Foundation, and we wanted to let you guys all know that we are again sponsoring the Fun Run on the Fourth of July, that will start at 7:00 AM in Kirsten Court, and you know that you all want to come because we'll all be in the Beer Garden on July 3rd, so, the Fun Run is a great way to start, kick off the parade that morning. The Fun Run for adults will be $27, for kids it will be $22. We have great swag this year, we're going to give out tech shirts to the first 200 people that sign up, along with a really cool backpack. Signups are now live on the city's website, so go to the city's website to sign up, and we're also going to give out bibs, shirts, and backpacks on July 3rd in the park before you hit the Beer Garden. Come see us at our booth, we'll be there, and if you guys have any questions about the foundation and who we are and what we do, the Sierra Madre Foundation can be reached at sierra madre foundation at gmail dot com. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker card is received from Sue Spears.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, I'm, my name is Sue Spears, I'm here representing the Mount Wilson Trail Race Committee, and it was already mentioned, but the, this Friday is our pasta dinner, it's, the Sierra Madre Civic Club ladies are serving, and it's going to be sponsored with Stonefire Grill, and the proceeds from the, the cost is $8 a person, the proceeds are going to support Sierra Madre Search and Rescue. In addition, we're going to have a Beer Garden hosted by RT Rogers Brewing Company, if you're not familiar with it, we, they designed a specialty Mount Wilson Trail Race Colt beer that will be on tap at the Beer Garden, it's also on sale in the four-pack at the bottle shop, so we encourage you, and those proceeds are going to support the Mount Wilson Trail Race, the Fletcher Fund, which is the, pays for the supplies for the volunteers who maintain the trails that are, we like people to come to. And then the Mount Wilson Trail Race is actually on Saturday, it does start at 7:30, and it's going to be, we have lots of booths there, and with giveaways, so we encourage people to come to that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sue, what time did you say the pasta feed starts, 5?
The pasta feed starts at 5:30 to 7:00.
When is the Beer Garden?
5:30 to 7:00.
Got to get that down.
But there's also going to be a Beer Garden, a different Beer Garden, well, it's a But there's also going to be a Beer Garden, a different Beer Garden, well, it's the same location, in Kirsten Court for them on the Mount Wilson Trail Race. And that Beer Garden on Saturday opens at eight fifteen, so drink up.
That's a serious Beer Garden.
I'm ready.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, there were no other speaker cards. However, city staff received three emails for public comment on items not on the agenda. Those emails were forwarded to the city council for your review and consideration, and they were uploaded to the city's website for public access and transparency.
Thank you, we did receive those, yes. Okay. Looks like we have one more public on. You may, sir.
Thank you. I didn't, I needed a card for public comment. Robert Jerde, Vista Circle Drive. In the MOU for the Meadows Project, there was a concession in there that two lots in the northern part of the property would be dedicated to the city. Somewhere between the draft EIR and the final EIR, that got changed where the city was no longer getting those properties. I've asked around, I've tried to find out how that happened, I haven't really gotten any answers. But I think if that, if the city loses that, it's going to be a real lost opportunity because future city councils will have the option of expanding the Bailey Canyon Wilderness Area into that section, and there are a number of general plan goals and objectives, which hopefully you got the letter I gave to the Planning Commission from a few weeks ago. But I think it's important to try and meet those goals and objectives to build that corridor across the top of the hillside for the city to have control over it and to possibly expand the Bailey Canyon Wilderness Area into that. I'm not sure what happened there. That's all I have to say, but I have two more minutes, so I might as well say something about the fire risk on the Meadows Project. If you read the EIR, it actually says there's a decreased fire risk because you have the roads put in there, you have fire hydrants, and you have the fire resistant landscaping designed across the whole project from top to bottom. You lose some of the fire ladders that we have now with the trees in there, and just that grass that's there that could burn very quickly, and even a five mile an hour wind, it would just take a few minutes to get to the houses at the bottom of the project area. On the water issue, how much is it going to add to the impact on the city? Well, it's going to be about one percent because you're adding about one percent to the city's property, so maybe it's going to be one percent more wear. But that's what property taxes help cover the costs of the infrastructure and the water system. Everyone will be paying their water bills up there, even though, even with the net zero water metering, they're still going to be buying all the water that they use and paying for that. This money will still be going into the city's system. As far as transparency, I think the Planning Commission should be commended for opening public comments again at the continued meeting when they're under no obligation at all to do that, and there's state rulings on that, court case, I don't have it in front of me now, but there's no obligation to continue public comments in a continued meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jerde. That concludes public comment. So Madam City Clerk, when you get the opportunity, could you please review the consent agenda for us, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before the city council this evening are six items on the consent calendar. Consent calendar A is consideration of Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-four approving certain demands, and it is recommended that the city council approve Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-four, approving the payment of city warrants in the aggregate amount of two hundred seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred fifty-nine dollars and twenty-three cents. Additionally, Sierra Madre library warrants in the aggregate amount of four thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars and eighty-seven cents. And lastly, the payroll transfer in the aggregate amount of four hundred twenty-one thousand, four hundred fifty-four dollars and forty-two cents for the fiscal year ending June thirty, two thousand twenty-two. Consent item B is the treasurer's report for the quarter ending March thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two. It is recommended that the city council receive and file this report. Consent item C is the second reading of ordinance number one four five four. This ordinance is amending chapter seventeen point zero eight of definition, definitions, chapter seventeen point twenty-two, second units, and chapter seventeen point twenty, point twenty-eight, it's the R three medium high density residential zone of Title Seventeen zoning of the Sierra Madre Municipal Code. And it is recommended that the city council conduct a second reading by title only and amend, by title only, of ordinance number fourteen fifty-four. Consent item D is the second reading of ordinance fourteen fifty-five, amending chapter seventeen point two zero, that's the R one, one family residential zone, chapter seventeen point twenty-eight, that's the R three medium high density residential zone, chapter seventeen point four zero is M manufacturing zone, chapter seventeen point forty-eight is development standards, chapter seventeen point fifty-two is H hillside management zone, and chapter seventeen point six zero is variances and discretionary permits of Title Seventeen zoning of the Sierra Madre Municipal Code. And staff recommends that the city council conduct a second reading by title only of ordinance number fourteen fifty-five. The next item on the consent calendar is item E, that's the second reading of ordinance one four five six, adopting a policy for the use of military equipment by the Sierra Madre Police Department. It is recommended that the city council conduct a second reading by title only of ordinance number fourteen fifty-six. And that's adopting a policy for the use of military equipment by the Sierra Madre Police Department. Lastly, consent item F is consideration of award of construction contract to Falcon Construction, Inc. for construction of the library improvement project number F C eight two one zero five in an amount not to exceed three hundred sixty-two thousand dollars. And it is recommended that the city council award a construction contract to Falcon Construction, Inc. in amount not to exceed three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two, library parking improvement project. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. So I will start with item A and see if we have any council questions. Mr. Staff, A, B, C, D, E, and F. None tonight, okay. Good deal. So I'll turn this over to the public for public comment on anything on the consent agenda. Do we have any emails on this, Madam City Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, staff did not receive any emails on this topic.
I'll close public comment and bring this back to the council. Would you like to entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I probably should have brought this up during questions, but if we could just have a brief overview for the community on, on agenda item F, what the, what the parking is going to look like for, for the library.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Members of the City Council. Arnu Foyenez, Deputy Director of Public Works. Yes, sir, to answer your question, Deputy Mayor Garcia. We are looking at, bear with me, it's my first time, so I'm very excited right now.
Doing great.
We're looking at the Sierra Madre Boulevard front facade, which will be redesigned to accommodate ADA requirements, along with parking, which will be at an angle, so easier to come in, easier to pull out. This will allow us to install one, two, three, four, five, six, seven new parking stalls right in front of the city hall, right in front of a library. This will also include some light landscape redesign, along with an ADA ramp to comply with the current regulations in place.
Thank you. So it'll be diagonal parking in front of the library on Sierra Madre Boulevard with some ADA improvements.
That is correct.
Going, going through there. Will it be a disabled parking part of those diagonal, or are those going to remain in the driveway portion?
Those will remain driveway. The current part, ADA required parking stalls, will be where they exist now. They'll just be revamped.
All right, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on anything A through F in the consent agenda? Can I have a motion for approval then?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Brings us to our first discussion item, which is the potential appointment of Bob Spears to the Planning Commission for a partial term of six months.
Good evening, council, I have an oral presentation for you today. City Council Resolution establishes the mayor shall appoint all members of city commissions and boards after consultation and recommendation by the city council. Commissioner Bob Spears was appointed to the City of Sierra Madre Planning Commission in June two thousand eighteen, and his term is set to expire on June thirty, two thousand twenty-two. Commissioner Spears is completing his second term as a planning commissioner. He is ineligible to be reappointed to a full term. However, Sierra Madre Municipal Code allows, also states that completion of a partial term shall not, shall not constitute a full term in determining when a commissioner or board member has reached the term limit provided in this chapter. The city council may consider appointing Commissioner Spears to a partial term as a planning commission, as a planning, as a planning commissioner, given his willingness to serve in the position and his experience as a commissioner. And that concludes my report, I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I did see Commissioner Spears here earlier, but just to double check, City Attorney Garagosian, did we ask Mr. Spears if he's willing to serve another six months?
I did ask him, he's good.
Yeah, yes, he did, he did confirm that he's willing to serve another six months.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
And the six months is just, I wouldn't say arbitrary, but just sort of finishes out the year, was, was just a rounding of this, of the term?
The, the six months was intended to allow him sufficient time to serve on the commission for purposes of consideration of the Meadows Project specifically. The Planning Commission had indicated that they needed help in the deliberation process, and Commissioner Spears would be the only one to participate in that because if the planning commission were to be, if the city council were to appoint a new planning commissioner to the planning commission, that new commissioner wouldn't be able to make any recommendation on that specific Meadows item because they had not participated in any of the prior hearings. So in order for the planning commission to have a body of five, in order to render a recommendation to the city council, the idea was to extend Commissioner Spears's term so that they can make that recommendation.
You'd, you'd provided us with a map for where we are in the process. So is six months enough? Will we be done in six months? And what if we're not done in six months?
That's going to be determination for the planning commission. There is no cap on the number of meetings the planning commission can have to consider this item, to consider the Meadows Project. So if the planning commission decides to have meetings beyond the end of this year, then it will be up for the city council to determine whether or not to extend Commissioner Spears's term out further, or to end that term and to appoint someone new, and to have the planning commission render a decision based on just four commissioners as opposed to five.
And where are we in the process? So we've brought the, the EIR, the specific plan, and...
Lot line adjustment.
Lot line adjustment, but there's one other, the, the...
Right, it would be, it would be the EIR, the specific plan, the general plan amendment, the zone change, and a lot line adjustment are the five items under consideration, as well as a development agreement. No, so city staff has advised that the planning commission not render a recommendation on any individual item, that they recommend, that they make the recommendation on all the items all at once at the end of their deliberation, so like, so that they can do so in a way that won't, so they can make sure that one recommendation will correspond to all the other recommendations because they, they're related. So at this point, there are, the, the planning commission, while they've looked at individual items, they haven't made any recommendations on the individual items.
And there are some that are subject to the five rule, five meeting rule, and some that are not. Have we started the clock on the ones that are subject to the five meeting rule?
So, so none of the, none of the six items that I outlined are subject to the five meeting rule? The five meeting rule, assuming this initial phase is approved, then, once the tentative track map and the design review permits come before the planning commission, those two items will be subject to the five meeting rule. But this initial phase of, of the public hearing is not subject to the public, to the five meeting rule under SB three thirty.
And are we, are you recommending that we limit Commissioner Spears' focus just to the monastery, or if new business comes up, he could take on new business as well?
I, I, I do recommend that Commissioner Spears, as, as a planning commissioner, be given full responsibility, responsibility as a planning commissioner to consider all items that come before the planning commission during his term.
And then does this then postpone the appointment of another, of a, of a commissioner until he rolls off in December, is that right?
Yes, it would.
Okay. Sorry for all the questions, thank you.
No problem. Any other questions?
He has to.
Okay, I think he did, I think he got them all.
No, no, no. The ones that were rallying in my brain, you articulated those, thank you.
Let me see if there's any public comment on this issue before we address it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I couldn't imagine that there would be any opposition to having the commissioner fill out his six months' term, but, and I think I got all of my questions answered by the city attorney, but I, I just wanted to say that before I was appointed to the Community Services Commission, I had been attending several of the commissions almost every month, and I thought I knew a lot about being a commissioner and what it would happen, be. Yet, when I finally arrived on the Community Services Commission, I found I was not as prepared as I thought I would be. It turns out, it takes a good six months to a year of meetings to get caught up with all the aspects of commissioners need to know, even with all the reading of materials. Appointing a new commissioner to the planning commission right in the middle of a very important and controversial project would be not only a disable, a favor to the new person, but would definitely be an injustice to the city. When the Meadow Projects is just starting, with the Meadow Projects just starting, to be heard by the commission, I would strongly, strongly recommend Bob Spears to be reappointed for the six months. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we have a second speaker card from Robert Jerde.
Hi, thank you, Robert Jerde, Vista Circle Drive. I just have a general comment, which is, you know, whether or not you pick Bob or end up appointing someone else, I would like to encourage you to only select commissioners who feel they are qualified to make planning decisions for the city, and don't feel that those decisions should be put off on a city vote to the electorate, when it's such a complex issue that it's really hard, even for those most involved, to understand all the details of it. And I'd say the same thing applies to city council members as the elections come up, that any city council members, whoever's thinking of running for city council should also be willing to make these tough decisions on their own, and not to push that off on the, you know, a vote of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jerde.
No other speaker cards were submitted, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So I would like to get the opinions of my colleagues here before I make a decision on this.
So, given some of the questions that Councilmember Parkhurst asked, and the discussion about six months, we do have alternative two, which is a partial term of less than two years, given maybe some of these decisions aren't made up until that point. Do we know if Commissioner Spears is open to going any, any time limit beyond six months?
I don't even know that. Tonight, he told me he would be available for six months.
I think we would, I think you mentioned that we would have the option at the end of the six months, if it was in a situation where this was still pending, we could revisit this and perhaps another six-month term, or another term of less than eighteen months.
Yes, and he also indicated that once deliberation over this project is complete, he will resign. I know, I know he's, he's eager to start his retirement.
And, Mr. Mayor, a question, would it make sense, I mean, as opposed to saying six months, or revisiting in six months, to approve his extension until the end of the deliberation? Would, would that make, I mean, one, I assume we can do it, but two, maybe with the council, would that make sense? So we may not have to revisit it?
Looks like alternative two...
If, if it's extended beyond six months.
Looks like alternative two might need that, and then he can retire when, so when he feels, you know, maybe two months, or eight months, or whatever it might be, and then we, the mayor can appoint someone at that point?
Have him resign on his own. Okay, I'm, I'm open to that, I think that works. I, I, there's no question for me that it makes sense to extend Commissioner Spears' term, again, given the complexity of the issue, all of his... Uh, again, given the complexity of the issue, all of his involvement, and his understanding of, of the project, uh, of, of question. But again, to be able to participate in any way possible for other issues that come up to the planning, I think, makes sense.
So you, you both are on board for two, item two?
Alternative one or two, I mean, whatever makes most sense, and I don't want to put Commissioner Spears out. He does so much for the city, and, um, we're grateful that he's willing to continue in this capacity.
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, I think for me, it's, as long as he's willing to serve le- short of two years is fine with me.
I guess the, the, the only concern I have is, i- is, I don't want this to drag on too long. You know, it, 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 it's, the, the thing I like about six months is that that kind of gives a little bit of push to, to, complete the deliberations on it. It's come forward, the materials are complete. You know, I, 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 I think we owe it to the community and, um, the landowner to have a, um, trying to think of the, the exact right word, but, but to, to have a, a timely review and, and, and consideration on something. You, you just don't want to delay, 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 delay on it. So, I, I'm not sure how, how, to me, that's where I, I can lean towards the six months of saying, look, if, i- if he's done less than six months, great, he can step off, but let's try to get the planning commission to get it through in six months.
And I'll just say, Councilmember Parker, as I, I, that makes sense to me, and I would be happy to second a motion, that's the motion that you have.
I don't think we need a motion, do we?
Make your decision.
Yeah, um, I'm good with that. I, as far as I'm concerned, the six month is fine. And if we get to six months and we need to re-up it again, and he's willing, then we can do it at that time. But I agree with you. I think putting a, putting a finite period on it does send a message to the planning commission that they need to, you know, make this, this, get this work done in a timely manner. So I will hereby appoint, uh, Bob Spears to a six-month term on the, extended, uh, term on his, on the planning commission until the end of the year. All right. Thank you, everyone, for that input. And item two now, we are going to be initiating proceedings for the levy and collection of assessments. I'm going to read this all by gully. And ordering the preparation of the engineer's report for the downtown landscaping and lighting maintenance district and Sierra Madre Light, Lighting and Maintenance District Number One, and establishing the annual special taxes for the community facilities district number one, and annual assessments for the East Bonita Avenue Sewer Improvement and Miramonte Avenue Sewer Improvement and levying special taxes and assessments for fiscal year 2022, 2023. How about that?
Thank you. That's almost the whole report right there.
Can you say that real fast now, three times?
Yeah, right. Uh, good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, I, um, have a report for you. Hopefully, it clarifies a little bit of, of the staff report. And afterwards, um, I'll be here to answer any questions, and Sofia is also here with me to answer some questions. Um, tonight's the second of three discussion, um, required for the tax levies of the five assessment districts. With the approval of the annual engineer's report for the downtown landscape, lighting, maintenance, assessment district, and the Sierra Madre Lighting and Maintenance District Number One at tonight's council meeting, city council will declare intention to confirm and set the assessments for fiscal year 22, 23, and set a public hearing date for June 14th, 2022, to take public comment, confirm the assessments, and order the levy for each district. Annual rates for the community facilities district number one, um, that's refers to One Carter, East Bonita Avenue Sewer Improvement and Miramonte Avenue Sewer Improvements are being presented to the council for an annual basis, on an annual basis, and were previously approved via resolution to be levied as required. This is the second year of the new downtown landscaping, lighting, maintenance district, and the properties affected will be assessed at 50% of the full assessment. Next year, the assessment will be full 100% assessed value, or assessed, um, fee. Sierra Madre Lighting and Maintenance District One for the area of Santa Anita Drive, north of Grandview Avenue. This district is the last of the Ad Valorem districts we've had. The other two Ad Valorem districts were replaced with the more usable downtown landscaping, lighting, and maintenance district. CFD Number One, that's the, the One Carter, is the assessment established by the developer at One Carter for the maintenance of the storm drain and catchment basin at the bottom of the private property. Fiscal year 2012, 2013 was the first year of this charge and implemented. No rate increases are proposed for that district. Sewer assessment districts, the, the city also has two sewer assessment districts. Both forms recover the design and construction costs for the installation of public sewers under the Municipal Improvement Act of 1913. The East Miramonte Sewer Assessment District Fund 546 was formed on April 4th, 2004, under Resolution 04-028. The East Bonita Sewer District Fund 549 was formed June 13th, 2006, under Resolution 06-039. Funds collected under these districts reimburse the cost of the design and construction for the sewer mains. Staff is recommending that the parcel charges remain unchanged for the fiscal year 22, 23. Tonight, staff is recommending the council confirm the engineer's reports concerning the levy and collection of assessments within the downtown landscaping, lighting, maintenance, maintenance district and the Sierra Madre Lighting and Maintenance District Number One for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2022, and ending June 30th, 2023, by adopting Resolutions 22-25 and Resolutions 22-26. Also, staff is recommending city council establishes the fiscal year 22, 23 special taxes for the community facilities district number one and annual assessments for the East Bonita Avenue Sewer Improvement and the Miramonte Avenue Sewer Improvement, and orders levies for the special taxes and assessments for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2022, and ending June 30th, 2023, by adopting Resolution 22-27. And that is my report, and we're here for any questions.
Thank you, Director Semino. Do we have questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, that's Member Greaves.
So I noticed in the report that, um, in addition to the, the amounts levied that over the last year or two, um, as covered in the engineer's report, that the city was also supplementing, um, those levies to have, uh, you know, sufficient funds to actually do the maintenance work, um, for those districts. My understanding is that will not be the case once the levies go to the 100% level next year?
Yeah, once the, um, levies go to 100%, they're to cover the maintenance cost of our downtown district, um, uh, as in the engineer's report describes there. The supplemental right now is being covered, um, through the general fund, um, which will be reimbursed by the existing districts once we've dislued in those, uh, or that district, or those four, sorry, into the general fund.
Great.
Which is coming soon.
Thank you.
Other questions?
The, um, Resolution 22-26, um, should that one be for the Municipal Lighting and Maintenance District Number One, the Ad Valorem District, instead of the Downtown Landscaping and Maintenance District?
Um, I'm sorry, Councilmember Parker said that's 22, 25. It should be for the District One.
Got it.
The lighting District One, and 22, 26 is the downtown.
I see that now. Okay, that makes sense.
Any other questions?
And, and how much money is in the account for the, um, lighting District Number One?
Uh, the lighting District Number One, the beginning balance, um, as of this year is $517,313.
And how much have we expended?
We expand, um, a projection of $2,000 a year in that district.
And, and, and at the end of the year, what do we forecast it to have?
At the end of the year, we forecast to have $583,313.
So we'll have more money at the end of the year than at the beginning of the year?
Substantially.
That's got good government.
This is the reason why we, we changed the, the downtown district.
Of course.
Because of the exact issue.
Any other questions?
Are, are there plans in, in, in the works to, um, upgrade the median, uh, where lighting District Number One is up on upper Santa Anita?
As the district is written today, it's lands, it's, um, lighting and lighting maintenance. It's not a landscape maintenance district. Um, in order to do that, we would have to do what we did with the downtown and, and reestablish, or, um, the, the, um, possibility of just disillusioning this district, um, and the, the funds can be transferred to the general fund for the benefit of that area if, if our council approves.
Thank you.
But, but to clarify, that's not on tonight's agenda. Correct.
Okay, I think we're good. Thank you, Director Semino. I'm going to open this up for public comment. And are there any emails, Madam City Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, there were no emails received.
Okay, thank you. So we'll close public comment. Discussion.
Uh, Ms. Mr. Mayor, just a, a comment. I, you know, I know we've been working on the districts for quite a while, and there's still some work that has to be done. Um, but i- in the meantime, we're, we're trying to align it, and it makes sense to, uh, move this forward. And again, looking forward to how we can incorporate a landscaping up on, uh, the top of Santa Anita at some point. So it's not a big differentiation when you cross city lines. Um, but I'm looking forward to supporting this.
Other thoughts?
No, I, I just don't want us to kick the, the lighting District Number One down the road. You know, we've got half a million or almost $600,000 by the end of the year. I, it, I, I'd be interested in, in potentially, I, I have no issue, and I think we've done the, the right thing with, um, the downtown lighting districts. And I think that the, um, the, um, stormwater makes perfect sense. So Resolutions 26 and 27, great. But I'd like to make sure that we've got a plan to come back with 25 and, and address that. Um, because I think, you know, we can't, as, as Mayor Potem said, we can't use the money on the median. And we can just use it for lights, and we're spending, you know, a fraction of, of the money on it. So, uh, um, I'd either like to remove 25 from the, the decision or to have a, to give guidance to staff to come back at a time somewhat certain um, to have a plan to, to, to take care of that district. Because I just think, you know, I, I just don't, I, I don't want it to, um, we get busy, we have lots of stuff on our plate. Um, I'd like to, to, to resolve this one. And I don't think it should be that, that difficult. But I don't know, I, I, I defer to staff. If, if I'm asking for something huge, please correct me.
Um, Councilmember Parkhurst, um, it wouldn't be as difficult as it was when we did the downtown district. When we did the downtown district, we, we had four districts that were, um, we had to, um, uh, go to a 218 vote, um, because we wanted to make sure that we moved into a, a new district that would allow us to, uh, benefit, um, the downtown.
And we had to do that vote twice, right?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, we did do that vote twice. This, uh, in this area, we would like, we can come back, um, with some options. You know, whether to start a new district to, to move this into, or, or, um, we can do a report and figure out what maintenance costs and what landscaping costs can be and see, you know, what, what can go from the existing funds.
I think, I think that's where we're, we're, we're headed. We'd like to get that, that follow-up, Director Semino.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you. So are we good with the resolutions as they're written? Trying to get a motion to that effect?
So, so if we have, so if we're voting on that first resolution, 25, is, what do we, what are we voting on that to, to do tonight? I just don't want to, it, I'm still kind of, we've given direction to staff, that's great. Is there anything that we have to, it, it, are we just, um, we're, we're, are we just approving the engineer's report?
No, it sets the, it sets the, the rate for the next year.
Sets the rate. So then, that sets it, then do we have to wait a year then? That's like, i- if, I feel more comfortable if we could, i- i- unless there's an issue, if we can take care of 26, 27 tonight and, and postpone 25.
But if I, and maybe Director Semino can clarify, but for, by not approving it, that we would not be, it would be dormant, we would not be able to do anything with that district?
We did ask our consultant about that, um, and they said that there's like a forgiveness period. If you, if you would let it go dormant for a year, um, you could come back in the following year and apologize um, and bring back, but, um, we wouldn't suggest doing something like that. I'm not sure, and Alex may be able to help, um, but if we, at the public hearing, if, if a decision can be changed. Because we do have to come back on June 14th, um, for public input at the public hearing. And, and, you know, I don't know if we can approve tonight and then have a change that night.
Right.
Sure.
Uh, Councilmember Parkhurst, I think, so if I understand your concern correctly, you don't want to approve a rate for the additional year if during the course of that year, the council wants to dissolve that district or do something else with it, correct?
Correct.
So I don't see anything stopping the, the council from taking some kind of action during that... Uh, dur- during that year. So even though you approve the rate today, there's nothing preventing the council from dissolving it six months from now? To my knowledge, there's nothing that prevents the council from doing that.
Okay.
And, and, and I think if the goal is to reinvest those funds, it, let's say we do dissolve the district and create a new district. Um, I, I'm assuming the goal is to reinvest those funds back into that, that area of the city. So it's not like there will be assessments levied and it won't be reinvested to the benefit of, of those residents, um, at the end of the day.
I think so. I, I just, I, I'd like to, to know, you know, 500, $600,000 is a lot of money for a median strip, and...
Maybe not.
I, I, that's, 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 that's what I, that's what I wanted. Why, I'm, I'd like to see that before going too far down. If we just keep collecting money on it, it just, you know, w- we, we end up, we're, we're taxing our citizens for something that they're not going to gain any benefit from.
Appreciate that. An- another thing that can be done, as, assuming this tax is imposed, uh, refunds can also be given at a later time. So that's also an option available to the council, assuming the council decides to take some other action on this district, and there's a huge surplus and wants to issue refunds. That may also be a possibility for council in the future.
So I'm, I'm coming around to being comfortable with it, with, with, and the only thing then is, is that we just, whatever resolution or whatever motion we make, we just need to correct the name on it. Because the, the name on 25 says that it's the, the downtown landscaping and lighting maintenance district, assessment district. So we just need to make sure that the top of the resolution says the right name.
Right. All right. Would you like to make a motion to that effect?
Yes, I, I'll, I'll, I'll move to approve, uh, resolutions 22, 25, 22, 26, 22, 27, and confirming the engineer's report, uh, for the downtown, uh, lighting maintenance district, a- as well as the, uh, Resolution 22, 27, for the, the special taxes for the community facilities district number one and annual assessments for East Bonita Sewer Improvement and Miramonte Sewer, uh, Improvement and levying special taxes for 22, 23, uh, with the correctage of the name of 4225.
I'll second that.
Okay. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Brings us to the end of our agenda. I'd like to ask my colleagues if you have any ideas about future agenda items we might consider?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I think, given the onset of summer and, uh, end of school year and some local conversations I've been hearing, um, I'd love for the, um, YMCA to come back and give an update on their programming. I know they've been having some staffing issues, so maybe they could also put out a PSA for, for, uh, their, their open positions. And so I, I think that would be a, a good thing to have this on one of our summer meetings.
Staff, can we get that? Staff, can we get that? I am, I'm, I don't know if I want to agendize it, but I would like to revisit this issue of Camillo, Camillo Street and some of the problems they're having up there. I think, I don't know what we can do about it, but I think we should have a discussion about it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
We're in the season of hearing from our commissions, and we heard from Civic Club today and the good deeds that they're doing here in town. I'd like to extend an invitation to the Sierra Madre Community Foundation. They are unlike any other organization in town as far as what they do and how they do it. So I, I would like to invite them to come, give a presentation on what they do, what they've been doing in the city, and how they get that done.
We're filled with ideas tonight. Any others?
Not for a future action item, Mr. Mayor, but I would like to ask if we can adjourn the meeting in honor of Joan Crowe and all of her contributions. Also, just a special mention of my sister-in-law, who is only 41 years old, and she passed away this last week, so.
That is a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned. God bless you, Joan Crowe.